Going to call today's special meeting of the Yountville Town Council to order. It is Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. Happy New Year, everybody. And it is 1:00 PM. So with that, first I'm going to go to our town attorney because we have the Vice Mayor joining remotely. And can you tell us what we need to do?
Sure. Are these supposed to be on? I don't think they are.
Yes, they should be on. I think they'll turn you up.
Is this working?
No, let's get a little more volume from you, so...
The light is on.
Mine's working.
Okay.
There we go.
I'll switch. All right, so Vice Mayor McKee, who you can see is joining us by video right now, will be participating remotely in the meeting, this meeting and also the regular meeting. It's starting at 3:00 PM. She's using a procedure approved under a bill called AB 2449. So she will be required to have video and audio on for the duration of the meeting. The clerk will take all votes by roll call, so we'll not be using the voting machines that you typically have in front of you. And there is an agenda item for you all to approve this as well. That's been added to the agenda. This is one of the very rare circumstances where the agenda can be changed before you take action on such short notice. There's one question for Vice Mayor McKee that I have as well before we start. Is there anyone else over the age of 18 in the room with you? And for reasons that only the state legislature understands, I have to ask that question.
In the House with me is John Cant, my spouse.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, can we get the roll call, please?
Mayor Muller.
Here.
Vice Mayor McKee.
Here.
Council members Knight.
Here.
Tripp.
Here.
And Reeves.
Here.
All members are present.
All right, thank you very much. Can we all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and now I'd like to, even the motions in seconds, we'll do that verbally. Can I get a motion to adopt today's agenda for our special meeting?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Council member Knight.
Yes.
Council member Tripp.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKee.
Yes.
Council member Reeves.
Yes.
And Mayor Muller.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to now, since this is more of a workshop, it's a little different, more casual format, I am going to, well, first let me take a public comment on anything that's not on this agenda. Do we have anybody want to come and speak on something that's not on this agenda? Seeing none, I will go ahead and move to our item today, which is a study session regarding what we're calling the Legacy Trail. So I'm going to let our town manager start us off with that. Then I'm going to ask council if they have any questions that they have, and then we will move to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the community that showed up today. As a reminder, study sessions are intended to be more or less formal so that the community can have a dialogue with the council. We pick one subject today. It's the Legacy Trail, but it also includes the discussion about the donation of the Giorgion sculpture. Sam will outline kind of the chronology, and then I'll come back and talk about thoughts to consider, which are all on the staff report, which is published on the town's website for those. I think there's also copies on the back table. After we're done, we can answer any clarifying questions of the council, and then I do believe we have some written public comments, which we will read into the record today. And then we will move on to public comment for those that are present here today. So thank you, and Sam?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as Brad mentioned, I'll walk through where we've been on these subjects, and then how Brad will pick up how we hope to move forward. So the exploration of this project began in front of the Town Council, the July 16th meeting, where the council heard an item to accept the donation of the life-size bronze sculpture of Giorgion at that time for placement at Town Hall. And discussion was had in public comment, and the council updated the motion to, and the resolution with some changes, basically putting it back to staff to work with the donor and see if we could move the project forward and look at it for further analysis. With that, a subcommittee was assembled and discussed the proposed sculpture. And that subcommittee included Mayor Muller, council member Knight, two Arts Commission members from, or excuse me, three from our Art Walk Subcommittee, which included Chair Cher, Judy Meredith, and Cindy Caption, and as well as the donor, Rob Orr, and the town manager and myself. When we met, we discussed a lot of the questions that came up at council. We discussed with artists the placement of the sculpture. We talked a lot about how it could be developed into something around the 60th anniversary of the town. And so out of that came a proposed expanded project that was called the Legacy Trail Concept, which then could include others who shaped Yountville into the community that we are today. It was discussed that Sally Schmidt, Francis Poncha Solis could also be included in the first round, and additional sculptures could also be analyzed for inclusion later as the program developed. So the Yountville Arts Commission heard the item of the Yountville Legacy Trail at September 9th meeting. They discussed it as well, and then forwarded that as an approval to the Town Council to accept the sculpture and look at different placement of millstones in the sculpture, and then as well as advocating that the Legacy Trail was something that they approved as well. And so on September 17th, we came back to council to consider adoption, to approve the Yountville Legacy Trail Concept, and authorized the town manager to work with the donor and the Arts Commission to move forward. But that was discussed by council and updated. The resolution was changed. Some of the recitals were updated, and a vote took place. To move forward and see how we can make this project work, the Legacy Trail itself. And so the town manager and I discussed, and along with the Town Council, to bring this back as a study session today. And it was promoted through the Yountville Sun and the website and other ways to, as Brad mentioned, have a little bit of a more informal conversation with the community about the importance and interest in this project and get further direction on how staff can move forward.
Thanks, Sam. So thoughts to consider. First of all, there is a town naming policy. We just used that for the naming of the multipurpose room at the Commons to Don and Sally Schmidt. This is different, but there is a process that you typically go through to, you know, honor, you know, people. We've also added, you know, places and events. And so I'll talk about that in terms of themes. But I think first and foremost, the question is, do we want to have a Legacy Trail? And I think that's something, you know, we're not going to take a vote today, but we do want to get direction from all of you, so we, after you've heard from the community, so we can bring back staff reports that are in line with the direction. You know, based on what I've heard, I think the question is how we do a Legacy Trail, not if we do a Legacy Trail, but we do want to reaffirm again that this is something that the council desires and will continue moving it forward. Secondarily, you know, what do we want the Legacy Trail to be? This is where I think themes such as, you know, historic figures, we do have, I think, five or six buildings that are on the National Register, which are, can obviously be part of a Legacy Trail, since those are already identified. Events, sometimes, you know, things that happened in different areas can be memorialized. And as you know, we do have a series of plaques throughout town that, you know, recognize certain things, and that's sometimes a good way. We provided options all the way, since the Giorgion sculpture was a donation that was intended to be a life-size bronze, we talked about arrange from that to plaques. Those are all things that we can talk about in terms of themes, but I don't think, you know, other than getting input today and giving direction, we're going to formalize anything. When we talk about compelling stories, this becomes the question of like, whose history are we telling? Obviously, it's Yountville, but that's through a lot of, you know, different people and different ideas. And I've only been here a year and a half, and I've heard a lot about the great rich history of Yountville, and it's, it is extremely compelling. And I think it's, there's so many good stories to tell. The question is, you know, who's making those decisions? So in point four, you know, we talk about how do you create a plan to develop and manage the trail? And who makes the decisions? And so there was four bullets that were offered, which got into just the staff, basically doing it at the staff level, working with the Arts Commission, which has successfully managed the Art Walk for, you know, quite some time in the town. An expanded Arts Commission that would include some history buffs that could look at, you know, what is deemed appropriate for the Legacy Trail. And then finally, the idea of creating a Historic Commission, which would be a five-member board. We're suggesting that would be two public art commissioners, two park and rec commissioners, and one appointed town historian, who would work on a five-member board to sort of vet these ideas and bring recommendations back to council before they get implemented. So those are important questions in terms of process and how these decisions get made. And then finally, there's a series of bullets that just, you know, kind of help you frame things. We did some estimates, you know, I think that the donation that is being proposed of Giorgion is, according to the donor, an $80,000 cost. We put a $50,000 to $100,000 cost for, you know, life-size bronzes, $5,000 to $10,000 if it was just a bronze plaque that was engraved, depending on a lot of factors. And there's a lot of things probably in between we could talk about. But I just wanted to give you a framework of costs so that we can talk about it, because there is money involved, so that would be a budgeting question. We did propose, and was included in the attachments, the idea of a sculpture or a life-size representation of Sally and Poncha, Sally Schmidt and Poncha Solis, over in the Hopper Creek Pocket Park as part of the picnic tables over there. I will tell you, we need to fix that park anyway, so when you get into funding things, it gets complicated in government, because there's all sorts of funding sources that we can use. But that will become a question after we develop a program, and we can kind of work one at a time. But, you know, between the donation of Giorgion and the proposal to recognize Sally and Poncha, those are the two things that at least have been presented to the community. And then finally, the final bullet, which I know there's been a lot of discussion about the Giorgion sculpture, is if we do want to accept that donation, you know, what locations would be suitable? Because that's been part of the conversation, Town Hall or other places. So I'd like to get clear direction from the council after you hear from the community on what you'd like us to bring back. So that concludes my report. Happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Okay, so just so everyone kind of knows what we're, I'll ask for any kind of just questions about what our town manager, Sam, has put forward for how we're going to discuss this today, and then I'll have our assistant town clerk read in, just so, since we have a lot of public here, the comments that we got, and then we'll go to our live audience. When we do that, Brad, maybe I'll ask you to go around with a microphone, just so we can make it a little more casual and go back and forth with everybody, and then comments from the council. Does that sound okay with everybody? All right. So does council have any clarifying questions that they have for staff? All right, that was quick. All right, so Brad, or Kami, yes, can you, I think we've got two or three public comments that came, can you read those? And then we'll turn it over to Brad with his microphone.
Yes, that's correct. We received two public comments prior to the meeting. The first one that I'll be reading is from the last name Jenny, and the email reads, "Good evening, Marjorie. It was very informative and pleasant to speak with you this weekend. We both share much love for the history of our beloved town, Yountville, and with remembering and respecting those who made it what it was, what it is, excuse me. When previously you and the Town Council met and discussed the gift of the statue of George Yount that was given to the town, there was much discussion about the appropriateness of placing it somewhere in town. There was some negative reaction, and the decision was to not include it in any future plans or projects. I wrote about it in my This Is What I Think column, and not only was my panel very much for the inclusion of George Yount in some for, some sort of memorial, but the number of emails, calls, and texts I received were truly an indication that the citizenry of Yountville wanted George Yount remembered. I did not approach you or any of the council members, because I truly believe you are all doing a great job and really have the best intentions and are the best group governing this town. But now that you may open this subject again, I do hope you can decide in some way of honoring the man whose name this town carries. I remain as always in awe of all of the time and energy you all spend on behalf of the good of this town. Respectfully, Jenny." And then the final emailed public comment came from someone with the last name Boop, and that email reads, "With the understanding that a George Yount statue or memoriam is an agenda item for Tuesday's council meeting, I wanted to offer my unsolicited input for consideration. Though my wife Sheri and I have been residents for only eight years, we feel passionately about Yountville. The initial recommendation to include Mr. Yount in the original design of the legacy project surprised me. It seems to belittle his role in the history of Yountville. No man or woman is perfect, and I'm sure that he had a few politically incorrect moments or actions. Who doesn't? Someone in Portland said, 'He without sin cast the first stone.' The United States was settled by imperfect men who undoubtedly mistreated the Native Americans and owned slaves. Our nation's capital is named after such a hero. Our city includes Washington and Madison Streets, Napa has Lincoln, a pretty decent fellow if there was one, and St. Helena has Adams. You get the point. I lived in Jacksonville, named for an unruly Andrew Jackson. Measuring these gentlemen and George Yount against the criteria of 2020s would truly be an uphill struggle. Standards of behavior change, especially over 180 years." Another point that I read was that there are two men, or enough men, recognized locally. I would prefer to frame it that there aren't enough women recognized for their contributions to Yountville. Being a recent addition, I can't begin to sort through our history, but I would certainly add Sharon and her Yountville son near the top of my list. I would be happy to leave the sorting of names to wiser, more experienced citizens to fill out the list, but to leave George Yount out is unfair and sexist, at least by some criteria. When we do travel and tell people where we live, they know Yountville, not as a perfect town formed by and developed by perfect people, but as a town known for quality where they can easily spend $1,000 a night to stay and enjoy great meals and wine. When people visit and asked why it is named Yountville, there should be a story to tell, not of a perfect man, but a pioneer who made a home, started a business, and lays buried in the cemetery at the north end of the town. Plus, create some printed material on the wonderful things that the women of Yountville did. It should be a bestseller. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Boop."
All right, thank you. Okay, turn it over to town manager.
Okay, so the podium or the mic, if you want to come on up or just raise your hand, I'm happy to come to you, whatever you're more comfortable with. Now is the time to speak up, but I'll, I see Sandy.
Just a thought.
And maybe you can just give your name.
Oh, sorry.
Sandy thing. We just wanted for the record, thank you.
Yountville, yeah. Yeah, just a thought that if the decision is to go forward with the statue, for example, we've mentioned other persons and so forth. Since that's been discussed, we have a donor, everything's sort of in place for that sort of statue if it were to happen. It could vary possibly and very well, and particularly since money is involved, it's a financial issue for other similar statues and so forth. But that one has moved along to the point that it's almost ready to go theoretically with a yay to the sculpture. I would want that statue to be put into place far before others are acknowledged. And I don't quite know how to put that in a way that would sound compelling, but if we've talked about, for example, life-size statues of Poncha Solis and so forth, those have not even been conceived of, and heaven knows when they'd ever get around to actually doing them, having them done, sending out requests for all that sort of thing. Anyway, I would hate to see something like that go into place, some sort of acknowledgement of Mr. Yount, without consideration of the fact that there will be so many other folks either, either prior to his coming, the indigenous peoples who need to be acknowledged, and then those that came after him to build this community, especially since we're in a 60th anniversary now. So lots and lots has happened, and I'm hearing this. Before I hand this back over to Brad, I do want to thank you for, to the council and others for revisiting this. We were talking about the previous conversation. It was interesting how there was not really a consensus among the council people when this was originally discussed, but at the end, there was a more, more of a consensus, and they were moved and all that sort of thing. The fact that it started out with not divisive, but certainly some different feelings about the statue and the Legacy Trail, and I appreciate the, I appreciate the thought, but it, to me, it's almost like a legacy path rather than a trail, because I, what, trail is something that, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of folks. Paths, we sort of created ourselves, very unique to Yountville. And so I'm just sharing that thought. At any rate, thank you very much for revisiting this. I think it was wise and gave us a chance to talk a little bit about it. But again, just be careful, since there's money, I know there'll be money involved in all of this. Hopefully, the timing will be that many of these plaques, statues, whatever, will be able to, we'll be, we'd be able to get them in with some kind of continuity, so that one's not a standalone, waiting for the others to come into play.
Good afternoon. Liz Alessio. I don't want to make sure Robin can see me. Robin, can you see me? Yeah, hi, Robin. So I'm wearing a couple of hats here. They're hidden, but they're present. One hat is that I'm very fortunate to be part of a pioneer family that settled in Yountville in 1872 by my great-great-grandfather, Matthias Vandeleur, an immigrant from Ireland, along with his wife Johanna. As a matter of fact, council member Reeves lives on the property where his home originally was and where my dad grew up. Additionally, I grew up with the Pioneer Cemetery here in Yountville, very proud of that. Through tragedy, my father lost both his parents in 1965, one in January, the other in March, and that compelled him to see what he could do to care for the cemetery. And he joined the board in 65, and then was president of the board for, from 67 until the year he passed away in 2018, so 53 years. I mention that not just because of her family commitment, dedication, and love for this wonderful town, but I mention it because that's what sparked his interest and then became a life passion of history around George Yount. If you knew my dad, Lee Hart, six foot two, you know, kind of a guy that walked in a room and you knew he was there, he was a police officer in Napa, career law enforcement. He's a stand-up guy. He was really always for the underdog, and if you know George Yount's history, you know that George Yount was really an underdog. And through a lot of misfortune and necessity, it forced George Yount along the Santa Fe Trail to this West Coast in Alta, California at that time, because of necessity for his family that was back in Missouri. So there's a long story around that, around the legacy of George Yount. Many people don't realize that he is a farmer. His family were German immigrants. He was a farmer when he married Eliza, and he married up, I will tell you. Her father wasn't thrilled, because he wasn't educated. He worked on his farm with his family, with the other, his other family members. German immigrants often worked together and stayed in the community, so he never had the opportunity for formal education. So his father-in-law wasn't really thrilled about that, but they did get married, and through a drought, which we've experienced here, he lost his farm. He lost all his crops. And before that, he was actually very successful, was able to save $1,000 back in, back in the 1820s. You can imagine $1,000, but no bank. So he gave his money to hold and safekeeping to his neighbor, who was a very wealthy landowner and farmer. Well, when he went to go back to get his money, so he could plant his next crops and buy mule, if you will, that farmer spent his money. And that's what forced him to join as a teamster to, along the Santa Fe Trail, and brought him out here to the West Coast. And then the legacy continues, and I could go on and on, as my dad, my dad often did. But along the way, from childhood through adulthood, he always stood up with the values of our country. He was a veteran of the War of 1812. He was actually underneath the sons of Daniel Boone. He gained the rank of lieutenant. And then when he came out here, and he was in this area, he met General Vallejo, and he became friends with General Vallejo. He was also a carpenter, and he brought the, what do you call it, those wood shingles that was so known for Kentucky that they didn't have here in California. And that's how he, that was his first job for General Vallejo, was to put those Kentucky shingles, there's a name for it, shades, yes, split shingle shades. Who said that? Shake. Thank you. Thank you, shakes. And so that's, that's his first job out here with General Vallejo, and he did that. He did some work for the priest over in the Old Sonoma Mission, in Sonoma Mission. And they didn't have money back then, so he got, it was trade in terms of a land grant. And that's how he became the first person to receive the land grant here in what will then later be Napa County, and that was Rancho Caimas. According to the history books, and you make a good point, you have to look at history. My dad read every single book on George Yount, and I have every one of those books, because I love the history of this county. I think we're really fortunate. And he was also sourced in several books that later on were written by local historians as a George Yount expert. And if you've been here long enough, you probably saw him in Yountville parades as George Yount, because he really embodied him in body, mind, and soul. So I share all this, because I think it would be, he would be so proud, and he would be here instead of me, if he could, to say, "Accept that generous gift." This town was called Sebastopol before George Yount passed away, and because of his warm hospitality, that he always let people come and stay with him, he was such a good neighbor, and all the contributions he made in this valley, and even in terms of the donor party, helping to get them over, the few that survived back here, and some of you know, they, some of them arrived and established themselves in Calistoga. Well, George Yount wasn't behind that. There's so many things he's done for this, for this community. And, and so after he passed away, the town came together and they said, "We want to name our town Sebastopol after Mr. George Yount." And that's how it became Yountville a couple of years after he passed away. The other hat I'm wearing is, I've been on the board and interim executive director for the Historical Society, as my parents were. Doesn't mean I'm a historian, it just means I love history. And I will tell you that Shelley Smith, who's the most recent executive director, who was brilliant, and she's your resident here, we should get her on that committee if we can. She, she presented just to the city of Napa, I'm a former city council member for Napa, and I was just, had my first county board supervisor meeting today, so I'm now one of your county board supervisors, one of the five women, making history here, is, what was that, what was that? Oh, yeah, that there is an economic benefit to this town or to Napa County that shows to be up to 36% if you really amplify and build up your history and culture of where you are. And as somebody who, in my past, who worked in And as somebody who, in my past, who worked in hospitality also for decades, I will tell you, people come here, they love the food, they love the wine, but they want to know the depth and the breadth of where they are at. And they will stop and look at those plaques. Your art walk is brilliant. I'm jealous. I wish we had one like that in Napa. And I will tell you that people love the history walks. I've seen that with landmarks, I've seen that with the Historical Society. So I really think, you know, we talk about cost, I think there's really an offset, financial offset here. In addition, just how proud residents can be of the history here. So I've talked a long time. Let me see if I made all my points, my big ones. Yes, yes. Oh, look, I did it. Thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you. Congratulations, first of all, supervisor. And thanks for your story, yeah.
Thank you. I've had the pleasure to meet some of you.
Can you just give us your name, please?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I haven't met all of you. My name's Gary, last name is Jabara. I own the estate, the west side of Washington Boulevard. I'm not a pioneer family, but I have been coming up to the valley for over 60 years or so with my folks who have a lot of good friends up here. They loved Yountville. We used to come here all the time. There wasn't much to do then. I just, you know, hung out with mom and dad, so it was kind of boring back then. But, but I love this town. I feel blessed to, you know, have been lucky enough to acquire the estate. I feel like I'm more of a steward, if you will, of the property than really the owner. I think I've got a lot of responsibility to the town. You know, we've done an inordinate amount of work to bring some life back into that side of Washington Boulevard over the last three years and appreciate, you know, all the help we've been given from everybody. I heard about the statue issue, read up a little bit on it. I've also, a little bit of a fan of history and certainly of this town. I think that's what makes this town special for those of us that aren't residents that spend a lot of time here. And certainly, you know, as the owner of the hotels there, the guests are always just so interested in the history of Yountville. And it's surprising how many of them really don't know how Yountville got its name and how interested they are. Anyway, I did hear that the town was perhaps searching for a home for the George Yount statue. So I'm just here to say that we would be honored on the west side of Washington Boulevard to find a nice spot for it there. We've got some great art pieces that run from the vineyard down there on, at the end of the, the south end of the property, all the way up through to the vintage house. So anywhere along there would be great. We'd love to host it. There's some pieces there that perhaps have some history that maybe have run their history. You might want to replace a piece with the George Yount statue. So anything that I can do to help with a solution, I'd be more than happy to. So just thankful for the town. It's a great place. I love this place. Everybody's always been so nice. And I've done business elsewhere in the valley. This is a very special place. So just thanks, everybody, for all your work.
I hope you put some shops in there because we need some shopping for those visitors who are gonna come and look at that statue. Have to just speak for a moment as a shopper and as a local. I'm Carol Fink. I wrote a hateful letter the night that the council voted to not accept the statue. I couldn't sleep that night. And I walked in the building today, this is the first time I've walked in here since I heard that Mary Lou Holt died. And it broke my heart because she was an old white woman. We don't have a statue of her, but we need a statue for that old white guy whose name is on this town. Last week, I was taking a lift back from the hospital and my driver, who, an old white guy, who claimed to have been a teacher in Vallejo, as we got off of California Street, California Boulevard, asked me why Yountville was called Yountville. And I called him on his supposed being a history, he was a teacher, I assumed he was a history teacher. And he said, "You know, I never knew. I never, please tell me the story." So we had enough time to quickly give him a thumbnail, not like Liz, but a thumbnail sketch of why our town is proudly called Yountville. And I talked about the fact that the statue was turned down, that we were getting a precious gift of the old white guy for whom our town was named. I'm so glad that today you've sort of reopened this and given us, following Liz, I loved your daddy and his history and his being a George Yount. And I can hear that cannon blasting at the cemetery. I just, please ask the council to rethink the decision that you made to find a spot. Gary, it would be lovely to have it somewhere in your property. I'm looking at the lawn outside here as well, that's sort of bare now, it's got the bell. I love to watch visitors. Our town is crawling with visitors who need shops. Every weekend, they're carrying bags from the bakery and they're not carrying bags from anyplace else. Sometimes they're carrying some wine bottles, but they look at the church. I live across from the church.
Do I have to hug you now?
Oh, yes, yes. I would love to see those, I would love to see those visitors also being able to see and be proud of the man whose name this town bears. They look at the bell, they take pictures of the church, of the plaque in front of the church. They think that George Seward is the man who's named, George Seward, the judge in front of the library is the man who's, for whom the town is named. We need this old white guy to be celebrated and it's a gift. And you don't look a gift horse in the mouth. Thank you for the chance to be here today.
Thank you. Anyone next? Anyone else want to share? Okay. Oh, go ahead. Okay.
Kay LaFrenconi from Yountville. I spoke at the original meeting against the sculpture and I'm still against it. I still think it's not the best idea. We have, the town is named after George Yount. There's, you know, he's a, you know, I'm sure he was a wonderful person, you know, I don't want to canonize him. And I don't think anybody does. But I think that we have, we have a lot of memorials to him in town already. And I think that, to Sandy's point, the, the timing is going to be suspect because we're going to have this sculpture of George Yount. And then, you know, maybe 10 years down the road, we might get some money, enough money to, to put another sculpture up of, you know, some woman or some indigenous person. And I don't think that having another sculpt, or another monument to George Yount, the town is named after him, I think it's pretty clear that he was instrumental here. And I don't want to have him be the only, you know, life-size sculpture looming over town and, and not have anybody else represented or just represented with a small plaque because it's a little more cost-effective. And I, I'm in support of the legacy trail, but I feel like that was proposed just as a way to make the acceptance of the sculpture more palatable. And, you know, I think it's a great idea to have the legacy trail and to have, to have more history, have more history available to tourists and to locals. But I don't want to have it just be George Yount. And I think that if we accept it now, that's what will happen. We'll be years without anybody but George Yount. And that's, that's all I have to say. I think it would be a mistake to, to accept it without a plan for, a realistic plan for other monuments.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to say anything? Yeah.
Yeah, my name's Rene Solis and I've been in Yountville my whole life. And it was, I would love to see a statue of George Yount. And hearing him say, having it on his property, if there's any possible way to have it on that, where the stop signs are, when everybody comes into town and sees it, I think that would be awesome. Nothing like going into an old town, when you go in these old towns, some of them, and they have a big old statue of somebody. And then you just read up the history on that person, whether it was good or bad. And everybody's gonna have an opinion on somebody. But you know what? That's history. Let's keep it that way. And another thing I would be, I mean, I'm honored just for you guys even mentioning my mom Poncha, considering that. And she's Native American Indian, so if you want a Native American Indian, there you go. And that's about it. Love to see the statue go in, though.
Well, thank you to all of you for coming and providing comments. As a reminder, we're not making a vote or a decision, but I think based on what you heard, getting direction, we're happy, Sam and I are happy to guide, guide the conversation. I will say that I am working with John Ferns and Public Works team to do what we're calling, I guess, the North Washington Corridor or whatever. We do have a road project. We do need to fix that Hopper Creek Pocket Park. I do think it's conceivable, based on some funding, that we could do the proposed Sally and Poncha sort of installation this year alongside. So I don't think there will be a big gap, at least with that. I think there does need to be conversations about maybe what's next. And I think we could talk about that in the future, but I just wanted to, for those saying, "We have funding, we're ready." Washington Street, North Washington Street is a focus for the town because of our road money and other things that we need to do this year. So that is a true, realistic thing. And again, the ADA issues and other issues at that pocket park need to be fixed. We need to fix that bench. So I think the idea of a farm-to-table sort of, I guess, honoring of Sally and Poncha, which I've shared with you when I read Sally's cookbook and she gave Poncha credit for a lot of her, I guess, farm-to-fork and farm-to-table sort of movement that has evolved in this town through the French Laundry, et cetera, is a pretty compelling story to tell, especially right across from the, I know what you call the Solis compound, hopefully I can call it that, but, and the French Laundry, of course, too, where Sally and Poncha both, you know, spent a lot of time. So I just wanted to say that. And then we're open to obviously any direction that you want to provide. So Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll just make a suggestion here. You know, across the street, we've got some history with Sally, obviously, with the old, the old Grossinger Mansion, right? Sally spent a little bit of time across the street. So I don't have a problem raising my hand and volunteering to pay for the next statue of a great woman in this town. So that make you feel better. And if you guys identify the artist and some parameters, so it's similar, we just hired a fantastic, not, I'm gonna use this for a little bit of a, what do you call it, a soapbox. We just hired a fantastic woman executive chef from a place called Flora Farms down in Mexico, very famous place. We stole her for the new restaurant we're opening across the street. And I mandated that we have another, we have a woman chef in this town because there's so many Thomas Keller minions running around the valley. Not, nothing wrong with Thomas, I love Thomas, but we needed another great woman across the street. So I'll volunteer to pay for that next sculpture. Okay?
Welcome to come to lots of meetings when we're talking about money, Gary.
I just want to make one quick comment, whether, I just want to make one more comment about my mom, too. Poncha, she had a Mexican restaurant where Bouchon's was in the 50s. I don't know if anybody knows that, but it was called the Rancho Grande. And then she worked with Sally Smith on weekends, cooking Mexican food, where it's Bottega now, but it used to be called the Chutney Kitchen. So that's a little history on my mom. She's been around for a long time.
Yeah, and to add to that history, because I read it in the book that Sally wrote, she talked a lot about, there was a moment in time where Sally decided she was only gonna put fresh tomatoes on the burger and your mom taught her to put green chilies on the burger. So during the winter, it was green chilies and during the summer, it was tomatoes. And like, those are like little things that are, I think, really cool parts of the history of Yountville. So thank you for your story and obviously, Gary, thanks for that offer. That's, was unexpected, but clearly generous and I think gives us more certainty that we can get something done again this year. So back to turning it over to the mayor. Thanks.
All right. So I just really want to thank everybody who either wrote letters or came to tell us their stories today and share with us their opinions. This is exactly what I was kind of hoping for because we really need to hear from people, you know? And sometimes things, you know, we send out our agendas and, you know, let everyone know what we're doing, but we all have busy lives. Liz Beck, there, former council member and now supervisor, we all hear a lot, "Why didn't I hear it?" So I'm glad that, you know, the council really thought this was gonna be worthwhile to really try to get the word out and, and really have this discussion because, you know, there's only five of us here. Robin's on the screen, but she's here too, you know, who, you know, we need to hear from you so we can make the best decisions for Yountville. So thank you for coming and sharing. It's been quite moving, I think, for everybody here to, you know, be able to share everything. So you can all stay, we need more of your help because now we are going to start discussing. And as we discuss, you know, feel free to raise your hand and I'll have Brad come by because it's a workshop, it's not formal at all, I want to repeat that, you know, what we want to see, what we don't want to see, and just some general comments. So I'm waiting, I have a little black box here that lights up so any council member can kind of hit their button and go, Councilmember Knight is first. So just your thoughts. And we can go back around multiple times and listen to the public and hash as we've gotten till our council meeting doesn't start for an hour and 15 minutes. So we're here as long as you want us to be here. All right. Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Tripp just kind of buzzed in.
No, actually, I didn't.
Okay, well, then, well, it says "talk" instead of, we're not sure how that happened. We'll like, okay, we'll go with Councilmember Knight. All right. We've got extra technology today.
Oh, maybe the buttons haven't reflected who's sitting where now.
It was my misclick.
All right, all right, good. A misclick. All right, Councilmember Knight.
Vice Mayor can't, I heard. Vice Mayor can't. Vice Mayor can't.
Got it. All right. And then Reeves. All right. Councilmember Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to thank everyone for their comments and I'm sorry that some folks left that wanted to thank Mr. Jabara for his offer. And just want to thank everyone here for what you've said. I also want to welcome and congratulate Supervisor Alessio. Thank you for coming to our meeting and congratulations. And we look forward to all the work you'll do for Napa County. I, I'm not a historian, but I'm a big history buff. I deep into ancestry.com and have done some research on the history of Yountville. And I think we're just at a time now where we have an opportunity where we really need to step up and commit to, to bringing the history of Yountville to the community and to the valley. Because I think the concept of this legacy trail is, or path, is, is an excellent opportunity. And we're celebrating our 60th incorporation next month and, but we, we have all these things going on and I think helped create the opportunity to build a legacy path, to let people know about the history of Yountville and to celebrate that history. I mean, with the work that our town manager is doing with the Washington Street Corridor from the offer from Mr. Jabara, we just have this great opportunity. We have a person on staff now, Ms. Huss, Caitlin Huss, with a background in, in history that is helping us with the incorporation, but could, I think, step forward and then continue this conversation of how do we celebrate Yountville. I think, as others have said, I think there's an economic benefit to people that want to come here and visit to know more about our town. So I'm all for us investing in that and, and really talking about this broad history of Yountville from indigenous peoples and residents of the valley to George Yount and to the Veterans Home being a big part. And the Veterans Home came here in 1884. That's after basically Yountville became Yountville in 1867. In two years, we have an opportunity to celebrate the 160th anniversary of Yountville's naming. And I think we should step up to that. And, and this is Legacy Trail and what we're doing now. And, and this is legacy trail, and what we're doing now should be our next celebration after our incorporation. And, and then the fact that we have in, in 10 years, the, you know, the celebration of the 150th anniversary of the Veterans Home here in Yountville, all big, big, important celebrations, but also this great opportunity with a legacy trail to really celebrate what's happened in the community, since incorporation with, with the Schmitz and, and Ray Monte and Nancy Monte and Poncha's Francine Solis and Dawn and Sally Schmidt, all celebrating all that history. And I think that maybe focusing in the time we spend on the Washington Street Corridor and focusing on the celebration from the Veterans Park to, in the south, to what we call Yountville Park now, that, and the Yountville Cemetery, that may, it may be an opportunity to reframe and talk and have a Pioneer Park up in the north end of town as Councilmember Reeves, we were talking just about this, about the whole idea of maybe, maybe it's time to rename Yountville Park, because we have all these other parks in town that are designated. But, so I spent a little time, Mark Anisim, a resident in town, led me to a search engine called perplexity.ai, where I put in information about George Yount. And I think there's just a lot of history about his contributions to the valley, not only the, the grain mill that may have predated bail mill and, and, and a Kentucky block house that may have been one of the few in the state. And, and in this writings on, on, I was looking at a 1926 California Historical Society quarterly report that was, that talked about the Chronicles of George C. Yount, that he may have even built a fort on the old State Farm property out by Rector Reservoir, which is now the, like, fish and game property, a fort that was torn down in the late 1800s that may have even predated Sutter Fort. So all this great history of the Napa Valley that really, this, his settlement here really, his, you know, really starts the history of the valley. But I think it's also very important for us to remember the indigenous peoples and residents of the valley and incorporate that in this kind of legacy trail. So I'm all for us setting up maybe a historic, historical commission with maybe members of different committees inviting maybe more residents and a historian to join that and for us to really focus and invest in that in the next couple of years as we move towards maybe celebrating the 160th anniversary of the naming of Yountville in two years. So I really appreciate that, and I'm sorry that Mr. Jabara left, that he's willing to offer a place for that statue along the Washington Street Corridor. I think that's maybe a more appropriate place as we celebrate the history from Veterans Park, the Veterans Home, all the way up north to the Yountville Cemetery, and that we celebrate the, and so, and remember Native American history, the fact that there's an Indian burial ground along with the Pioneer Cemetery. So I look forward to us working on this and being, being involved in the next couple of years as we really develop a legacy trail and, and invest in a history from the beginnings of this community and prehistory of it to celebrating Poncha's Francine Solis, Sally Schmidt, and, and those that have really also contributed to this community just more recently, you know, to, that's built the name of Yountville. So thank you for all being here and for your comments. Yeah, I look forward to what we do in the future.
All right. Vice Mayor McKee.
Thank you. And I want to thank everybody in the room, particularly Mr. Solis and family and Carol. Thank you for coming into a space that we haven't seen you in, in a while, or I haven't seen you at all in my service. And thanks Supervisor Liz Alessio. It means a lot to hear voices. When we met in September and asked the public to come, there wasn't a lot of passion expressed or interest expressed on the issue. So council made the best call that we could at the time, based on the voices that were heard, or the voice, and two or three that were heard at that time. And we go out individually, I'm assuming we all do, and solicit feedback. So the fact that we voted in September to wait, and I do want to specify that we didn't say no, and I think the sun put that we said, "No, we don't want George." We voted to take a step back and further determine a plan and further determine how we could take care of this legacy trail and the statue to make sure that we were giving it a time to vet it and, and figure, and what we now know are alternative locations. I certainly never want to look at gift horse and a mount, but you also to have gifts with caveats about particular places or particular, you know, details made it very limiting. So now, because we did take that step back, we've had the benefit of hearing from more people. And so I'm really pleased that the, that Brad, town manager, has also added now people, places, and events, which all contribute to, to this amazing town that we have. So we have a better formed plan. And also, I really like the, the special board that we'll be forming with members from our commissions and a historian. Liz, when you spoke to Mr. Yount's warm hospitality, of course, that perked my ears up and his perseverance, because I think we all know that Yountville was the little town that could. The economic development detail of the 36% increase for towns that amplify history and culture, I am very interested in learning more about that. And the, when the legacy trail was first proposed, I was all for that, because I am strongly in favor of giving people more to do, since we have no shopping right now. But I don't want to go off track too far. So I think that, that, that legacy trail supports. And now that we have a plan and some funding in place, I do want to also circle back to say that at the time, we had just bought the school, we were just having to increase our funding for the wellness center. And there were a lot of strong voices about how we were spending money without a lot of thought. So please, I hope that you'll join me in realizing that this council has a big job of trying to balance interests with funding. And again, to have this dialogue with you all now and to have Mr. Jabara come forward and offer support towards our first statue outside of George Yount and also a different location, this is, in my opinion, all a win-win. And I really thank everybody's patience as this plan has developed as it needed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reeves.
Yeah, I also want to thank everybody who came to give some thoughts on this. I think my take on this whole process is that timing is everything. In the beginning, when this sculpture was first introduced, it was introduced at a time when we were talking about the incorporation and the celebration for that. And at that time, a statue to George Yount didn't make sense in the context of incorporation. And I think it still doesn't make sense until we celebrate the 160th anniversary of the naming of Yountville. I think there again, timing is everything. We would have an opportunity to educate and to create a, a celebration that would draw in both residents and visitors, and it has a point. Just setting up a sculpture of somebody without the requisite context, I think, is difficult to make it seem appropriate. So I don't want to backtrack on all of that, but I feel like the idea of a legacy path, I love that term better than trail, because we're not a frontier town. I feel like a legacy path is a wonderful idea. And I do agree with the idea of the economic benefit, because we do need to be not just a one-trick pony town, it's only wine tasting. No, we have other things to offer. History is an important thing. When I travel, I always go to the little town museums, because not only do you get to meet people who are enthusiastic about their town, but you get to find out really interesting little stories. And the most important stories that I just got when I went to Pacifica last weekend was sort of the bad part of their town. Some of the negative influences that had happened there, they were a Japanese internment place. They also were part of this sort of Native American eradication movement in the wayback times. But the fact that they claimed it, they named it, and they're now moving on into their future with the knowledge that not everything was perfect. And I think that that is also part of George Yount's legacy. There are things in his past that, you know, show he was a man of his time. And it's not the kind of time we have now. I don't want to celebrate that part, but there are other parts of him we can celebrate, the hospitality and the agriculture and the, the idea of maintaining the beauty of the area. So I feel like I don't, I want to talk a little bit about how we would create this legacy path, what are the parameters? And I want to also make sure that this legacy path is not in competition with the art walk. I want to make sure that we have funding for both, that makes sense for both, so that we can tell a lot of stories in Yountville, not just this one story. And this idea of a commission, I like, but I would also say that yes to a P-RAC member and yes to an art commission member, but then open it up to, to other residents at large, because I don't know if that would be possible, that two people on a commission would be jazzed about this other commission. So I would like to catch those other people in town who are interested, who have something to offer about the historical aspect of our town. So I would like to change that little part of it. And also, the idea of, in our naming ordinance, it says either living or deceased. And I would hope that in order to get the full measure of a person, we should keep the legacy path to deceased members of our community. You can't get the full measure of who they are until they have passed, and we have a chance to evaluate their contributions. And as far as the idea of who belongs on this path, I'd like to quote the, the idea that the U.S. Surgeon General just stated in his farewell message. He wanted everyone to rethink what makes us happy and successful. And his takeaway from that is that what really matters and what really makes people happy and successful is relationships, service, and purpose. And I would propose that those are the gold standard of someone who is on this legacy path, that they have to have been community builders, they have to have made important contributions that make Yountville what Yountville is. And I think that those kinds of sort of base parameters are necessary so that whoever we get as a historian has something to base these applications for new people or events on the walk. So those are my preliminary comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Tripp.
I wanted to start just by thanking everybody who came forward, and also those who, many people have talked to me about this whole issue. It's really great to get the feedback. In fact, this is probably some of the most feedback in my couple of years here that we've received. And when this whole issue was first presented last July, it was in a very specific context, which was, we were looking at the front of Town Hall, we were looking at the 60-year anniversary, and we were looking at this particular sculpture. And at the time, the question was, and in part, I believe, it was communicated to us that the only place it could go was in the front of Town Hall. So that, putting it in the front of Town Hall had its certain aspirational aspects that caused me to kind of step back and think about it. But I think it's great that we've revisited it and, in and of itself, I think that says a lot about our current council, that no one feels that we can't revisit something in light of community input. So I really, I just think that's wonderful. So many decisions get made where people dig in, and that's the end of the story. So I'm really happy about that. I certainly do appreciate history. I don't know a lot of the history of Napa, but my great-grandfather came to Berkeley in the mid-1800s. And so I am a longtime Californian with a lot of respect for California history. But I also really like the idea of the legacy trail, because I think, and more and more those of us who are aging, I'm really realizing, we look at the world very differently from millennials, from a lot of the other cultures in the United States. And we talk about tourism, you know, having worked in the visitor's center, huge number of our tourists come from very different ethnic backgrounds, different countries. So I think we just have to think about what interests them. And looking at the wider lens and the idea, I think the legacy trail makes particular sense, because almost everyone is interested in the cuisine that goes on in Yountville. And if we can incorporate figures like Sally Schmidt and Poncha that also speak to that, as well as George Yount, I think that would really be a good thing. And I like the idea of perhaps putting a sculpture of Mr. Yount in the Washington Street Corridor. And I think that's really wonderful, that Mr. Jabara said he has a place for it. And then, just finally, I want to be sure that we do acknowledge that there were some really good initial comments raised on this issue that really caused many of us to rethink this. And so it wasn't easy for some of the members of the community to make some of those comments. So I really appreciate that they did come forward initially. So I support the idea of the legacy trail, and I guess that's pretty much, I don't have a specific feeling on how the decision should be made, but I do like the idea of a group that incorporates P-RAC members, art commission members. And I liked Councilmember Reeves' idea of including people from the community generally, if we could figure out how to select those people and incorporate them. So those, those are my comments.
All right. Thanks. So just to, I'll provide some direction specific to the staff report, because before I asked, you know, the staff, "Have you gotten direction from the council?" And here, the head's shaky. No, I'm going to provide some, so. No, I'm going to provide some, so, and then we can maybe all add or subtract to that. So, the, I really like the concept of not just people, but perhaps, you know, places or events, so, you know, I think that should be part of the discussion of this group that we form. And I think it might be, we might need a little more discussion and thought, once staff brings back a report about really who's going to make that up, because I do think that there, I want to get the people who have the passion. And so, you know, if there's, you know, P-RAC people, if there's two of them, and the Art Commission that really have the passion, that's great. If there's only one, then I think really reaching out to the public and find those passionate people out there. So, I'm looking for people with passion. And I think, this is really, I'm very excited for this to start. Everyone knows I'm right up there with, you know, anything historical about Yountville, and I think I've probably also read every book that Lee Hart, we used to sit around his coffee table, I mean, his kitchen table all the time, talking about stuff, and I'd run out and get the book, or he'd share stuff with me. So, anyway, I think that I would also, this is going to be a bit of a challenge, and I do think we need to take some time in doing it. I don't think we have to rush off and just, you know, fill the town up with, you know, statues necessarily, because one of the challenges, I've been working with Randy Pena and Caitlin on a lot of the history that we're going to put up on our diagrammatic whatever we're doing at the Yountville Commons. And so, we started out, because we really wanted to talk about the movers and shakers, you know, who's really been active over, since we had our 50th to our 60th. And boy, what a challenge. So, we've started out, we've also worked with Denise Jackson, and we came up with like this really big list. And yes, they were all very notable people, but then we were challenged amongst ourselves to really kind of call it down to, you know, even though we'd like to write up stuff on 50 people, we really felt like, you know, we set some parameters, we wanted to say like 100 words and really find out, you know, who we all agreed were kind of important people, and it was hard. And so, that's what I'm saying, that it'll probably take some time to kind of really go through that and vet that, and there's a lot of, a lot of learning curve. So, I will be patient, I, you know, because I think, different than the Art Trail, which, or the Art Walk, which kind of turns over a lot, I think a lot of the things that we're going to be doing are going to be more permanent installations. So, I think we need to give direction to the people that we're not expecting, you know, in the next couple of years to fill up, because I'm even thinking 50 years from now, you know, people are going to like, hey, we should, you know, you know, really have a statue of somebody who, you know, maybe isn't even born yet. And so, but overall, I'm very enthusiastic about this, and I do believe that this is going to be an economic driver for Yountville in addition to every other things that we've done while we're waiting on all that shopping to occur, so, or to develop. And let's see, I like the idea of, you know, I would like to hear, you know, when we formed the group, some of the, I like the idea, kind of like a theme. I think we've identified probably like people, places, events, but, you know, I think a theme will go along. I'm sure we'll probably have marketing materials, something on a website, so I think that will add a little bit to it. I think it's going to take some time to figure out what a good theme is, but if, you know, some thought and discussion about that, I really think that would be a great thing to do. And again, compelling stories. We've heard a lot of great compelling stories today. So, I think that's where, I'm very excited, there's a lot of stories to share, and I think it'll, anybody who's going to be on this commission sharing those stories will be, I think, a way to kind of help develop those themes and where we're going to go and what it's going to look like. So, I think they'll, that'll kind of evolve out of that. So, let me see. I don't know, I think the parameters, I think we've, I think you're hearing very positive from not only the public, but the council, that we want to move ahead with this. I'm open to changing the name later. I think some of these things just need to be a bit fluid. I'm fine with the Legacy Trail until we get some themes and some more discussion, and, you know, maybe something will really evolve, you know, from that. And in terms of a plan, I think we've all kind of talked a little bit about that, we're generally in favor of, you know, some Parks and Rec and maybe some art people, if they have the passion, to kind of be on there, maybe some other people. And thank, again, for Gary, we don't have to talk about our immediate financial needs, but also in the future, I think we will. So, I think maybe that's something that our community foundation can even think about, is some donations. I know many of us donated when we were talking about having the mural under California Drive, and people really came out and did donations. So, I think I'd like to add, you know, that whole concept about getting donations in addition to some town funding. I'm not sure what that's going to look like, but just kind of put that in. And I think I've talked enough about that, and I see more lights up here. Okay, Councilmember Reeves, you want to respond with some other thoughts?
I think it would be good to speak a little bit about whether we think Yountville is a statue town. I have a hard time with the idea of thinking that we should have a bunch of statues everywhere. I can understand a memorial, historical monument kind of thing, or half-bust on a rock, or something like that, but to have a bunch of statues, I think, is not what we expect in Yountville. So, I would like to say that if we're going to approve Mr. Yount at seven feet tall, I don't know that we need a lot of those life-sized people standing around town. I get that we have the judge on the chair, but that is an art piece, not dedicated to an actual person who lived in town. So, I think it's a different animal. So, I'd like to talk a little bit more about our expectations of what that would look like, and then, and also then, sort of, eventually making some inroads into how we make the interpretive materials for this walk, because I find it not so helpful to have a whitewashed history of whoever it is we're depicting on this monument. I want to have some real fallible human conditions of this person's life, what they went through, all of that stuff that is the sum total of who we are. Nobody is perfect, we get that, but it's helpful for people, especially young people, to understand that you don't just spring from whole cloth and be successful. You have to go through your life and accomplish things. So, I think it's important as an educational tool to be realistic, to be sort of accepting of people's foibles, and to call them out. So, I want to have that discussion eventually as well, because I think that's important and necessary for true education.
Councilmember Knight, comments?
Yeah, just a few. I agree with all, many of the comments that I've heard. I appreciate Councilmember Reeves. I think when we celebrate people, we have to celebrate the full person. So, I would just, in terms of, I just wanted to agree with the mayor, that I really think that what the staff report has said is we should be focusing on people, places, and events. I also believe we should have passionate people on a historical commission, so I just wanted the staff to be, know that they have flexibility. Maybe it's important, since many of these may be in parks, that we need someone from P-RAC and we, and to have the contribution from someone from the Arts Commission, but maybe if we have one from each, and then we're really opening it up for residents that have a passion for this, that if there's someone on P-RAC or Arts Commission that wants to join as a resident, they can, but we're opening it up to be sure we're inviting people from the Veterans Home. And so, whether there's five or seven people on this commission, that maybe we're getting that represent, one representation from P-RAC and Arts Commission, but then we're really encouraging people that have a passion that, to be involved in this, will join. And that's, I think that's better to get, have more opening spaces for people that are interested, and to have, you know, I think, like I mentioned earlier, we have this opportunity with a person on staff now, with Ms. Huss, to be able to, you know, and, you know, somehow this would be working through, we have that person, her, and to be able to help lead this commission that we move forward, and we start this discussion and find ways to really address how we talk about the type of people, places, and events, and we talk about this full history of Yountville, which includes the, I think, important to talk about native peoples and residents in this valley, and how the valley formed, and so I look forward to that conversation, so.
Vice Mayor, comments?
Yes, I have really appreciated all of the conversations that we've been vetting, and particularly Councilmember Reeves' idea of incorporating things other than statues. You know, my mind goes to the natural beauty and charm of the town, so certainly working with rocks and busts and wood, and petrified wood, and natural elements along this path, I think would be, make it more interesting and more real-like for the town that we're in. And then, just the last point, while it does make sense in some ways to wait until the 160th anniversary of the naming of the town, at the same time, I don't think there's any better time to support our own economic development. I know that there's a lot of concern in the Napa Valley, and I see that Whitney's got a conference coming up just on this topic, so I think anything that we can do to give Yountville a leg up sooner rather than later is something we should all consider getting behind.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that. I think that's a very good point, and I understand how Sebastopol changed their name to Yountville, but I've actually seen an old map, it's actually in the archives up at the Napa Valley Museum, where George named Yountville Yountville, and it says 1831 on it, and so part of Yountville was Madison and north. So, we just have to kind of figure that out. I like the concept too, but just another story that to kind of tell, so, and so, so thank you for that comment. So, we have a couple of public, we've been talking a lot up here, you want to, does the public have some more, any more comments that they'd like to make?
Come on, Mr. Tenscher.
Sure, why not? Alvin Tenscher, I'd like to go back to the beginning.
Let me make sure your microphone is on.
Yeah, it's on.
Okay.
I'd like to go back to the beginning so that we don't rewrite history here. All of you are to be lauded.
I sneezed. It was a sneeze.
All of you are to be lauded for your willingness to step back and take a close look at this. My initial concern was that this statue donation felt like it was being played fast and loose, and we didn't really have the full conversation that thanks to your openness we're having now. So, I think that that's an opportunity for the town to speak their mind, but also an opportunity for me to thank you for your willingness to do that. I initially had reservations because it would be one more expense for this art, well, this history path or trail, but I think, I think I'm convinced that we should move forward with this as an opportunity, until there is more shopping, for the town to have some there, there, for things for people to do. So, I really think that with, if you listen to each other and listen to what's been said, I think we'll make a good decision on this. But I do feel that to the best of our ability to have things in context is important. What we call things is how we will perceive them. So, thank you.
Okay. Okay, back to staff. Did you, did we make sense? Asked us some questions? What else do we need to?
Well, I obviously want to confer with Sam and spend some time, you know, downloading without it being in the public view, but, because I made a lot of notes, and I see that she's over there. But there was three things that I kind of nailed down, and it's just like, I want to kind of get head nods to make sure we're headed in the right direction, so we, because we're going to have to come back, and I think there's, to me, three things. You know, there was first, the trail, the path, what we call it, I don't think we have to make that decision. I will tell you, we initiated it with the walk, and then we went to the Public Art Committee, and they turned it into the trail, so you can go round and round. To me, a trail and a path are the same thing, just to be, you know, clear. So, I don't think that's a thing, but I think, and then all the stuff that you started to talk about in terms of, you know, deceased, and how the program would work, and all of those things, I think those are best suited after the commission is formed, and that there's a conversation at the commission level, so they can talk about that, and then obviously come back with a recommendation. Similar to how we dealt with the community foundation, which we'll be talking about later, where, you know, we established, okay, we're going to do the Imagine Yountville thing, you guys figure out how you want to do it, you have to, of course, bless it, but I do think, like, let's get the passionate people in the room and let them talk about trail versus path and all the criteria. I do think we all agree, and I noted, everyone said people, places, and events is a good sort of framework, and I think that's really useful. I think the discussion, so number two to me is, okay, what does this board look like? And I also would tell you two things. One, you can serve on two boards here, so I just wanted to confirm that in some cases. So, you could be on both, and you could do the 2-2-1 or the 1-1-3 approach. What I like about the 2-2-1, of having a town historian that is appointed by the council, is you then have one person who is, when you're talking about what gets written on the interpretive panel, and how you're remembering the whole person, these conversations that you're all having are very much interpretive. And when three people are trying to agree on what one person did, it can be tricky, it can be muddy, committee work is hard, you all know this, you do this. So, having someone who you all appoint to say, hey, you are the town historian, who works in a body of five, which obviously would be residents, because I think the P-RAC and the Public Art Commission, well, P-RAC but not Public Art Commission has to be residents?
Yeah, we have two seats on the Public Art Commission that have, yeah, for business within town.
So, if your issue is you want to have residents, we could talk about that, but I think, think about three historians versus one, because I think if someone is identified as that person, they can serve a purpose, which is tricky, as you try to rewrite history, because that can be, again, something that, you know, and again, I do believe there will be checks and balances. I like the idea of a five-member board, it's easier to work with, and I think we could go back and forth with one or three. That's something, to me, I don't think we have to decide today, I just want you to consider the trade-offs of that. And then finally, I think what I do want to get the head nods on, because I think we now have to come back with a staff report which would accept the George Yount donation, and now we have a new donation on the table, which obviously, and I haven't talked to Mr. Jabara, but what I will say to him, when I see him, is I would much prefer that he gives us the money and we do the creative side of it. So, this isn't like he's off in a room creating. And I think Sally and Poncha, to me, are what we have at least vetted with the Public Art Commission. I think there's a good plan, we have to do the Hopper Creek Park. If you saw the plan, just so you know. If you saw the plan, just so you know, because there is a picnic table in there, it was the idea of Poncha sort of sitting at the table, so not standing like a big statue, having a conversation with Sally, who is on a bench. And then we have a place where people can sit down and eat. And so I think that concept was vetted, but what we would need is money to go hire an artist and come up with a concept. And I'm hopeful that Mr. Jabara is just willing to pay the money. Versus, I think, part of the challenge we got into, that everyone recognized here today, is that we were just sort of sprung on this donation of George, and it was like, what does it look like? Where's it going? And there was a lot of details that we were not controlling. And I think with the Sally and Poncha thing, assuming everyone agrees, I would say we come back with a staff report as quickly as we can, saying we're going to accept the donations, based on, and at that point, I can also work with Sam to determine where exactly George on the Washington Street corridor would go. I think there's been ideas floating around, but I want to be very specific when we come back to say, here's where he goes, this is what he's going to look like, because I know he's in process, he's being forged, or whatever is going on right now with George. So I would want you all to accept that, both the donations, and that would then kick-start things. Meanwhile, we would form the commission, and the criteria, et cetera, would be established, but we would be moving forward with those first two installations. So. Head nods? That sounds like.
Head nods? Okay, we're nodding our heads. There's a head nod on the TV screen. You have unanimous head nods.
So I'm guessing in March, maybe, I mean, I'll talk to Sam, I'm guessing in March, we could come back with the donations, and then it'll take us a little more time to kind of sort through the commission thing, and.
And then you would obviously review any commission bylaws, and we'll work with Gary on creating all of that, and before it comes back.
All right. Okay.
You would also, just so you know, review, if the Sally and Poncha moves forward, you would review any of those designs to accept it as a permanent piece of art at that point, because we don't have this formal program in place. So you would see that along the way as well.
Good, exciting. With that, I will accept a motion to adjourn our special meeting at 2:33 to our regular council meeting on January the 7th, 2025, at 3:00 p.m.
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second. Can we get a roll call, quickly, please?
Councilmember Reeves?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKee?
Yes.
Councilmember Tripp? Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Mueller?
Yes, all right.
Motion passes.
See everybody at 3:00 p.m. Bye.